Well, we're already two minutes over and we may have a packed agenda here. So we're just going to get going and others can join in progress. So we'll call to order our May 1 Public Safety Committee meeting. Can I get, well, why don't we wait on the minutes, I guess? We'll start right up front with our, let's see, this, I got a request to see if we could move up the, where is it? Our risk manager, is John Jordan here? There was a request from the administration, move this up to the top. I'm just not sure. No, okay, we will hold that off then. All right, so first up is, we have a presentation from scraps. Is Jesse here? Not seeing Jesse, wow, okay.
They're batting a thousand.
Okay, yeah.
One more minute and we can approve the minutes.
One more minute, we'll just go right to the minutes.
Yeah.
A couple of updates, so on the agenda is the jail discussion. That was pushed to June. Unfortunately, the county presenters were not able to be here today. They had a fully loaded agenda today. So they will be here June, I have their commitment on that. We are also going to be removing the update from Chief Schaefer. He is unable to be here today. And there's one item that was missing, and it's our K-9 update. And so we will just interchange those if there's no objection from anybody. Okay, so then we will just move along. And Chief Mydl, is your designee here as well that's going to be addressing us?
Good afternoon, council members. So council member Cathcart gave us five minutes at the beginning to give updates. And I know you all hear from us ad nauseam. So I thought it'd be a nice change to have one of our graveyard officers come and talk to you about what's going on on graveyard, what it's important to the officers, what are they experiencing as well. So Winston Brooks is going to come up and just speak to kind of what's going on on the graveyard shift as well while we're all sleeping. He's out there keeping us safe. Winston comes to us by way of Quarter Lane. He is one of our field training officers, also, I think, on the dignitary protection team. But it's asked if he could give us a five minutes of what's going on on graveyard patrol, what's important to our graveyard officers as well. So with that, I will call him up.
Good evening. I'll be quick because my meter's running, so I don't get free parking. So I was asked to come and speak to city council. There was no direction given, just come and speak on the state of affairs, basically, for the department. So I was gonna just, I wrote a couple of notes down on my phone here. Like Chief Mydl said, I'm a lateral from Quarter Lane Police Department. I've been in Spokane since 2013. I'm a state instructor in defensive tactics, emergency vehicle operations, teach culture diversity, have helped implement implicit bias, teach mock scenes, dignitary team, PAC team, public information officer, field training officer, reserve officers lead, and the department recruiter, to name a few. The reason why I say that is to let you know that I have been invested in this department since I came here, and I don't just come and put on my uniform and go home at the end of shift. Excuse me. I was going to start with saying morale has been, has been at its lowest point in years. I came in 2013, and at that time, we were the best department on the West Coast. Our training was top notch. CNN and other, other national syndicates, syndicates came here to see what we were doing, excuse me, to take a closer look. In recent years, it appears to officers that some city council members and a small number of citizens have been able to change the way we perform our duties from the training budget to what the department has been able to purchase or lack thereof. Vehicles, man, we talk about vehicles all the time. I've never been to one of these meetings. I don't pay attention to the meetings. We hear all the updates from the admin. We drive some of the most worn, oldest vehicles, Crown Victorias, and other vehicles that should not be in service, all while we see county and other agencies driving around with 2021, 2022 vehicles. We constantly ask at in-service, road calls, and other places, when are we going to get new vehicles? To try to keep the troops happy, graveyard officers, day shift officers, midship officers, it doesn't matter, you're, we're driving cars that should not be out on service. Calls for service, we respond to calls for service daily as they've increased in the amount of calls and with more priority ones and priority two calls, which are the more violent calls that we respond to. That requires multiple officers and anywhere close to, if any of those calls happen anywhere close to shift change, you have officers being paid forty and fifty dollars to try to find the car in the parking lot while waiting for cars to come back. While we're doing that, our calls for service continue to keep piling up as we're trying to get caught up. Secured parking. For some reason, we continue to purchase, rent, or allow to be in cop shops that's fixed up to only have that spot taken away in a few years. Ninety percent of officers' days should be in their vehicles responding to calls for service, being productive, being proactive to prevent crime. Unlike other agencies, we show up to work and leave work, show up and leave work, having to scan the parking lot, look over our shoulders, look on the cars, see who's out there. As, you know, way before my time, a pipe bomb was located under a vehicle. I know the citizens love firemen at AMR, and this is no knock to them at all, but no one wants to do harm to them. But yet, they still have secured parking at every facility that they have, unlike the police. Crime, drugs, guns, seizures. I was a part of a team that was disbanded due to a frivolous decision. That decision has since been investigated to be just that. During that time on my, during, during my time on that team, we seized more illegal activities, excuse me, illegal narcotics, arrested more individuals involved in crime, and seized more illegal cash in any one of the recent years. Since that team has been disbanded, everything mentioned above has steadily increased and the funds given to the city's general budget has decreased. So I think that's part of why we don't get most of our vehicles or secure parking or whatever. To my last point, and I wanted to make this quick, when we hear things such as we are almost there, but it's been 10 years or more as it relates to vehicles, staffing, support, and more, it becomes, here comes the recycled information for the new guys as the older guys begin to tune the conversations out. At some point, things have to change for the police department, and the troops have to understand or know that city council have our backs as well. We still show up to the job because we care for each other. The camaraderie is good. And it sounds, it can sound to some of you like smoke and mirrors, but it's absolutely true that we still show up to this job because we care for each other. We know we don't get the best of whatever anymore, but someone has to be out there. And then, like in myself, us graveyarders, while you all are sleeping and people are prowling your cars or burglarizing things. So I don't have anything else to say. Thanks for allowing me to be here today.
Thank you very much for sharing. Is there a question?
Yeah. Thank you for your service and all you do. And I don't sleep, so I'm one of those people. And I just wanted to answer a few of the concerns you have because I've worked for the past, I guess, four years prior to COVID, looking for a place for police to land because your current space is too small, it's rundown, the roof leaks, you don't have secure parking, all the things you just stated. And we did find a building, but we reached an impasse. Last year, we appropriated $3 million for police cars, but now we're caught in this cycle of you order them and you wait and you wait and you wait. And so now we're behind. And I don't want to say they're coming, but they're coming. We got a report from Fleet last week that talked about a lot of the things that you're talking about. And we understand that take-home vehicles are important. We get all that. And we're trying our best to balance a bunch of different departments, knowing that public safety is really, really important. So I just want to say to you, it's not like you're being ignored or we're not working on things. I've been working with Chief Mydl on finding a new spot for a very long time, and it's really hard to figure out where you're going to find something big enough for 250, to park 250 cars. So it's been a bit of a struggle, but we're not giving up. We're going to keep working on it. And again, I really appreciate all that you've told us today.
Take-home cars can solve that, 250.
It would, indeed.
Thanks, chief. Yeah.
I just thank you for coming before us and talking to us. And I just publicly want to say that this shouldn't be an us versus them. It's all we've seen the past several weeks, and I feel badly about it. We should be working together and we should be helping each other to understand what the needs are. So I, I really regret that it's turned into that kind of play that we're back and forth.
Sorry to interrupt.
Because I feel like it's, like you think it's all of our fault, and
Not as a whole.
We could sit here forever and go back and forth, but we're still blaming each other for things that we could work together to solve.
Yeah, and I absolutely agree. And not as a whole, we, we as the officers, we don't come to these meetings
Right.
consistently. This is the first time I've been in this building downstairs, and like I said, I've been there for 10 years. So we hear things as well, just as the rumor mill can happen about what happened with police officers, right? So then it's like, okay, well, that's what we hear. We're not a part of it because we don't show up. So not blaming city council
Right.
as a whole. We just know there's just certain aspects that's not being met or certain needs that's not being met by both parties.
But please feel free, I have a, you know, the North Side, Northwest Spokane, and I meet with our captain regularly. Once a month, we have coffee and talk about how things are going. And I would hope everybody in the police department, if they want to sit down and talk to a council member, please call us. And, and, you know, let's just get together and talk about it because I guess the timing of this just, it just adds on to the, what the discussion has been the last several weeks. And I don't want either side to feel this way. But if you ever have questions, call us. I think we could get a lot more done.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anything else?
I just had a quick comment, and thank you. I think, I think we may have met once way back when. I guess I just want to reiterate the narrative that's incorrect, that council does not have public safeties back. If you go back and look or if they share, we funded pretty much everything they have asked for to do their job and to keep you all safe. I know you mentioned cars as part of the morale issue, but I just can't believe it's only cars that contributes to the morale issue. So I was just curious if there was another item that contributes to morale?
Well, it all, everything contributes to the morale, the cars, the secured parking, being in a, what, what year was the county building built? Sharing that, leasing that, not having our own space, staffing, officers having to be held over, shift change, configuration. I mean, there's a lot of things that contribute to the morale of the officers. You know, and I say this to them, and they know this, they don't have to be there. Like some of the lieutenants and captains are out at night, or lieutenants are out at night, but we, all of us are working hard, and we're just like, man, we're just not breaking, you know, we're not getting there. So it's not just one thing, it's a, it's a combination of a lot of things that, it's just like in a, in a relationship. There's more than one thing that breaks the back, right? So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, one, one quick thing I wanted to point out was, we had heard and went and saw how the training facility is and how the carpet's bad and stuff like that. So I want you to know that council, we heard that, and we actually advocated for and got 1.4 million dollars to expand and improve that area out there versus the $70,000 that was asked. So a year ago, it might have been talked about saying like, oh, council's not helping replace our carpet, and for the last year, that didn't happen. But instead of just $70,000, we got 1.4 million dollars. So we do hear that, and we are advocating for that. So I just want you to know that.
Thank you.
That we're there.
The other thing is you could probably build a bridge, bridge by the academy too, because there's a train that gets stuck there to stop cars all the time. So that's just one other request.
You did good.
Thank you.
We'll get right on that.
Thank you.
We're going to do our K-9 update. Lieutenant Jensen?
You want to take a quick minute and approve the minutes?
Oh, yeah, why don't we, come on up. Can we get a motion to approve our minutes?
So move approval?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say nay.
No.
No.
No. All right.
But, but they are approved.
I had it backwards. All right. Motion is approved, minutes are approved. Lieutenant, please go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon. My name's Lieutenant Jake Jensen. I've been with the Spokane Police Department for about 22 years. Within that time, I actually served on the K-9 unit for 10 years, working three patrol dogs. It was the best time I've ever had in my life as far as just the experience it brought to me. I'm here today just to give you a monthly update on our K-9 unit and the, kind of what's going on within the unit. Currently, we just graduated a six patrol dog handler, Anthony Guzzo, and he'll be out there working with his K-9 partner, Ghost. That brings our unit up to six officers who are working patrol dogs. Currently, our year-to-date stats, we have 204 deployments. Within that, we have 64 captures. That's when the dog attributes to the actual capturing of a person who is placed under arrest for a various amount of crimes. Within those 64 captures, we've had three contacts or bites. So the bite ratio currently, year-to-date, is at 5%. If you recall from case law at the federal level, anything under 30% is generally kind of acceptable. Anything over 30%, they say, kind of attributes to maybe looking into, maybe having something done because your bite ratio is too high. So we're sitting at 5%, which is very, very well below any standard that we would look at as far as having dogs out there biting everybody. Kind of a showcase, something that occurred on April 8th. Officer Stone and his K-9 partner, Haywire, responded to a burglary downtown area where somebody had broken into a secure apartment building and then into an apartment. Officers responded. We contained that area, we made announcements, nothing was heard. K-9 Haywire was sent into the apartment, worked into some scent to where the handler recognized that he was probably close to the suspect, called K-9 Haywire back, gave some more announcements. The suspect said something about having a firearm, so obviously, that's concerning for the officers that were in close proximity to that apartment building. More K-9 announcements were given, K-9 Haywire barks, the suspect then gives up. So it just showcases like the importance of these dogs and what they provide to our patrol officers out there, in that they, they create that reactionary gap for us, that distance that we need so that we're not right on top of somebody, especially somebody claiming to be armed with a gun, which we all know would end probably terribly for either that person or us. So the dogs are truly a crucial tool for us to have out there to keep us safe, to keep that reactionary gap so that we can do our jobs safely. And it, and it benefits the, the people we encounter as well. Any questions from the council?
Okay, I've been wondering this for years and years, so I'm just going to ask it.
Yeah.
In your time with K-9, with the K-9 unit and working with police dogs, has there ever been a standard poodle as a police dog?
I have never come across that, no.
Never? Okay.
You can't use a lot of dogs, though, as
Yeah.
I just wondered that. Thank you.
Any other thing?
And I will say, I went to your training with Councilmember Cathcart. I watched him potentially get his arm chewed off. It was exciting.
It was fun.
It was, and then watched the dog trot off with his arm into the distance. So the professionalism, how well-trained the dogs are, was really impressive. And Jacoby was there with me, and we, we learned a lot, and I appreciate the work you guys do, men and women, and the dogs. And when you said, well, the dogs are a tool, I went, mm-mm, they're dogs and they're special. That was the only place I disagreed with you. Like, I think we both did, like, no, dogs are special, got to protect them. No, they're supposed to protect us. So that's where we went this way. But thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up, our parks ordinance. And we've got Garrett and Mary, and who else? Captain Hendren?
Captain Hendren's here.
Okay, and there's actually an alternate version as well that will be briefed after. And council president, is that you?
Yeah, it's just all part of the same.
Oh, okay, so we'll just kind of have a collective discussion.
Mary, did you want to come up and?
All right, well, thank you, council president and council, for the opportunity today to speak on behalf. And I, and I'm here to speak on what we're looking at and dealing with in Parks and Recreation. Captain Hendren is here to look at the tools of how we can mitigate some of those concerns moving forward. And then Mary's here to talk a little bit about the details of the legal aspect. In Parks and Recreation, around vandalism, this is the tough reality that we're dealing with. And this year, from November 1st to the end of April, we've seen an increase in vandalism. And our estimates are about $163,000 out of the park fund that are dealt with vandalism. This is, again, this isn't in our budget where we just have a vandalism section. This comes out of our general operations. This is the same staff that is maintaining our playgrounds, maintaining our restrooms, that are now dealing with what you see on the screen. This is potentially one less playground that we can have in a park. This is potentially one less amenity that we can have in a park, or also maybe one less time we're able to mow the grass in the park because of this vandalism. To give you a little bit of history of the park rules, before 2018, all park rules in the SMC Chapter 12 were considered a misdemeanor. In 2018, there were some revisions that were done around some of the drug laws that we have in our park rules and the weapon laws. Unfortunately, the park hours was left off of that consideration where we actually had, here's a class three infraction, or here's a misdemeanor. And then at the bottom, it said, unless otherwise specified, all other park rules are considered infraction. So that was in our mind, an oversight during that time. And then in October of 2022, the park board did endorse bringing back the park hours after hours as a misdemeanor. So this is from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM for all outer parks, and then from midnight to 6:00 AM in Riverfront Park. So just to give you a snapshot, you know, Mission Park was a huge hit for us, and, and these are when the restrooms are locked as well, so restrooms aren't open during, from November to April. You know, here's a chase of our Mission Park restroom completely trashed. They tore out all the electrical, so about 50 grand worth of electrical equipment that was, was stolen from this location. Club cars have been stolen. Locks seem to not be the answer to anything these days. After hours where they're cutting the dead bolts, they're prying off the doors. Another example, Keigho Park completely stripped the entire restroom. Toilets, sinks, you name it, gone. And a part of this, too, is, is, you know, it's not even the tools from the law enforcement, but these are, these are things now that are taken out of service. There's a quality of life issue, the things that happen after hours, and then this, unfortunately, what a family would walk into that next morning, as an example, in Keigho Park. So again, working together, and I want to thank Councilwoman Stratton for her leadership of how can we combat of things that are happening in our parks after hours when parks are closed? Where we could potentially have less needles in our playgrounds that next morning, or that restroom be open for service for the public to be able to enjoy, or hopefully, long-term, be able to take that 163,000 during the non-peak season and be able to reinvest that into the benefits that we can provide in Parks and Recreation. So again, here's just an example of some of those top ones that have just been, that we come back as staff to inspect in the mornings and then we have to take off of service. And so here's another example. We're not finding that this is a concentrated location at this point. You know, when I first started in the early 2000, we'd have the hotspots, and we would work with SPD on identifying, you know, we're having issue at Franklin Park or Mission Park, and we're able to work with SPD for additional patrols. But now we're starting to see this being a widespread effort for us on our parkland. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Captain Hendren to talk about the enforcement tools of bringing the misdemeanor back.
Thank you. Council, thank you for having me here today. From the police department standpoint, looking at last year, 2022, it was one of the worst years we've had in city parks when it comes to violence. We had three different shootings that occurred in the overnight hours when parks are technically closed that resulted in nine different gun, or victims struck by gunfire. It's actually eight different individuals because one individual was actually involved in two different shootings and was struck two different times. But we had eight people struck by gunfire and one fatality, all occurring on city property that's technically closed. And the reason why I have been spearheading this with Councilmember Stratton, and I appreciate all the work that she has done on this, as well as Councilmember Cathcart and Bingle, we don't have the tool right now to be able to take back the parks at night. Right now, the violation being a non-traffic civil infraction, we do not have authority under Title VII of the RCW to do anything when somebody's non-compliant. If they're non-compliant and refuse to provide us their, their name, date of birth, their ID, they basically tell us to pound sand, there is nothing within the RCW, there is no violation of that code for us to enforce. All the code allows us to do is detain somebody long enough to verify their identity. We have no authority because I can't compel a detention because I don't have a crime. I'm not allowed to use physical force under RCW as well. So our officers have no authority when it comes to this with non-compliant. Most people, like myself, if I'm in parks after hours and a police officer comes to me and says, hey, the parks are closed, you need to leave, you don't have to ask me twice, I'm going to go. That is not who we're talking about that's causing the bulk of these problems, the damage that, that the Parks Department is referring to and the violence I'm referring to. And to give you a scope of the violence, and this is all included in what I've provided for the council, but just running data that was put together by our crime analysis unit from January 1st of 2021 through March 31st of this year, this is data that was captured where it was identified specifically to the name of a park or an address of a park. So anything that was reported as an intersection that wasn't tied to the park would not be included in this data. So this data is going to be an under-representation of the actual number of incidents. But with that said, during that timeframe, we've had 692 incidents, CAD incidents, reported that have occurred during the time that parks are closed. Of that, 79 were incidents that contained a level of violence within the classification, like assault, rape, shootings. Of that, 79, 29 of them were specifically shooting incidents. Of those 29 shootings, they occurred in 22 different city parks. So as Parks was mentioning, this isn't isolated to just one or two parks. This is a problem that we see across the board. Our top two parks for shootings that were reported were reported at the parks over that timeframe were Dwight Merkel, where we've had three, that was where we had one of the shootings with a victim last year, and the other one is Mission Park. We have four parks that have two shootings in each reported during that timeframe, and that's Ottomont Park, Dutch Jake Park. Dutch Jake Park was one where we had four victims struck by gunfire last year, and then also Cliff Park and Comstock Park. Basically, every neighborhood in the city of Spokane is having issues with violence in the parks. I'm already getting complaints coming in about gatherings at Dwight Merkel, at Cannon Park. We actually had a reporting of a potential shooting at Cannon Park about a month ago. Wasn't verified, we couldn't find shell casings, but we had multiple reports of hearing five gunshots that occurred in the parking lot, and this was in the middle of the night, again, when the parks are technically closed. We're getting reports of gatherings at Friendship Park. This is another park where we're having a lot of problems. These groups that we're talking about that are causing the bulk of these problems in the after, overnight hours, they're not very cooperative with the law enforcement. Our experience last year during the Franklin Park shooting, that was where we had four people struck by gunfire, including our lone fatality. When our officers responded to try to provide lifesaving measures to the three surviving victims and secure that crime scene, they were met with almost what was, you could almost describe as a riot, not by the suspects, but by the associates of the victims. These groups are showing up, they're drinking, they're using drugs, and they're often armed. Drugs and alcohol lead to bad behavior, bad decisions, and and obviously, you bring weapons into it, it leads to violence. For us to safely go in and engage these groups, it takes multiple officers. Our minimum staffing on the graveyard shift, when we're down to a single shift, so from 10:30 or 10:40 at night on, for the three sectors, not counting downtown, is 15 officers. It would take almost that entire shift of officers to deal with some of these giant gatherings that we see at places like Merkel, at Franklin Park. So the reason why we're asking for the return back to the old park rules, this gives our officers leverage. Now, I know the Council President, I saw what he was suggesting with the idea that we use this as a, or we get granted the misdemeanor power only after we have made contact and advise these folks that they need to move along, and if they don't move along, don't comply, then they can be arrested for a misdemeanor. In fact, that's probably the way we would execute the use of this ordinance most times, because we don't have, the jail doesn't have room to book a bunch of people into it, we're too busy to write a whole bunch of park rules violations. We, what we need, though, is the credibility, so people know that they can be charged, so they don't gather there, because the gatherings are the problem. If they know that it takes us contact by law enforcement before they're in trouble, they will continue to gather, we will continue to have these problems, and they'll wait until we contact them, and we will play whack-a-mole. I don't have the staffing to do it. I just don't. I would have to take 10 officers and assign them just to work parks and chase these groups around. That's the, that's the challenge with that proposal. Yes, Councilmember?
I, I read through this. Mary and I worked on the last iteration of this, 2018, I guess, right, Mary? I can't remember. Anyway, we identified area, the sidewalk and the parking adjacent to the park as part of it as well, not just the park. I didn't find that in here. Is that in here?
No.
I mean, that's where the problems are, in the parking lots and...
Yeah, the parking lot's still considered part of the park property. It's actually on the, on the park. The sidewalks are a whole nother ballgame, and I'm fine with expanding that to give us power there.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not just in the, it's also in the park itself, we were having problems, like Dutch Jake was in the park.
I just think that Comstock Park isn't just in the park, it's in the parking lot, it's on the sidewalk, it's, so...
So Councilmember, so the last iteration, so in 2018, this is when we had the oversight. In 2020 is when we came and adjusted the park rules once again.
Yeah.
That was around drug paraphernalia.
That's right.
Food. And then what we did, though, was a huge success as a pilot program around no parking on the adjacent to parks that followed the same park hours. So we did that at Courtillane, Harman, and we saw significant success with that as well, because we had some drug dealers that would just hang out after hours right on the curb line of these parks. And having those no parking signs around adjacency, that helped tremendously. And so that's something, too, that we worked on with SPD. So even though it's not in the park rules, we've been implementing no parking.
Are you expanding that to all parks?
So we're working on a few others. I'll just give an example. Right now is the Down River Conservation Area. So Down River Drive adjacent to Down River Golf Course is seeing a significant amount of negative activity, trash, garbage, vandalism that's happening along that roadway. And so we'll be working with SPD, too, to establish those no parking signs. So it's kind of been as an ad needed basis right now when our staff can go out and put those no parking signs, because just like the park rules, we have to have the park rules posted at a park, so that anybody can see the SMC saying, Chapter 12, here's the rules, that's for the user, but that's also for the enforcement to say, see, this is what the park rules are, this is what the sign is, so we need to be able to enforce that. That would be the same with the no parking.
Has, Garrett, has there been conversation amongst your staff about updating those signs with response, with regards to the resolution we passed last year on language access in the city to meet that, basically, the requirement that we, the five main languages plus martialis be included?
No, I can say right now, those signs haven't, the last, we did an update in 2020 to all our park signs to be more user-friendly, because what we found is sometimes saying the things that you can do is actually sees more results than listing everything that you can't do, even though we do list the SMC at the bottom. But that's a great point as far as the language barrier.
Is there, is there a QR code or anything, where maybe it could just take somebody somewhere?
I'd have to confirm if there's a QR code or not that takes you to that link.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Garrett, is it just like one sign, because I've been trying to rack my brain the last time I've seen that sign in a park. Is it just like one sign posted with the park rules and the hours?
Depending on the park, we'll have multiple locations. A lot of times, we'll try to secure it to a structure. If we have just a park rule sign that's on a post, a lot of times, that gets vandalized and torn off. So if there's a restroom facility or adjacent to a playground, or a splash pad, some of those high-use areas, that's where we'll try to post those signs.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. Because English as a second language was going to be my question is also, especially based on the demographics you had in the report that you submitted.
Go ahead.
So as we talk about parking lots, because that wasn't part of our conversation.
Yes.
Or sidewalks, well, let's just say parking lots, could we, we could easily add that to the ordinance to include the parking lots, or is it because you already have no parking signs that we shouldn't have to worry about it?
They don't have them, have them everywhere.
All our parking lots that we manage were still within the ownership.
Within the park, okay, so that would cover it?
Yep.
Okay.
I would not be opposed to any very specific language that's clear, because that clarity's good for both the the public to be aware, but also for my officers to know exactly what their left and right limits are. But yeah, we view the parking lots like Franklin Park, where the, where we had the incident last year, Dwight Merkel, it's, those gatherings are occurring in those parking lots. So that's where we'd want to gain control. There is some of the stuff that goes on the adjacent sidewalk, but the bulk of the gathering that causes the problem is within the park. And if we take that away, that deals with a lot of the overnight partying problem. And I know this will push it to somewhere else, but at least we want it off of city property. And real quick, just back to why we want to use this tool specifically, we've used this tool time and time again with private property owners. We've got the same, I've got emails from councilmembers today about the, up on North Division, we're seeing gatherings again, some street racing and whatnot. One of the locations where this is occurring, the, they have taken down some of the signage. We need to go up there and repost it for no trespassing, no loitering during these hours. That way, we have the enforcement tool of trespassing to go and get these people to move along. And we've done this time and time again. Most of our contacts result in education, compliance, people move along. There are those that will challenge us until we can establish credibility with the ordinance to where we do actually have to issue citations. And there's even a smaller number that may require an actual custodial arrest. But my experience of going back pre-change of the law, when I was a young cop, I have never actually had to write a park rules misdemeanor for being in the park after hours. Typically, if you pulled up in a patrol car and they saw it, they left. They knew what the day was, they were gone. And one officer could maintain control once the credibility was established. That's really our intent, but we have, they have to know that just gathering alone in the parks after hours is now they have committed a violation. So, yeah, yes.
Forgot, sorry.
No, well, we do have two versions of the ordinance. And so while we still have our presenters here, is there anything you want to?
I was just going to ask a question, Captain.
Yes, sir.
First of all, thanks for your service. You do great work. You said that you would enforce it the way the alternative version, which basically tries to separate out those people who are in a park not causing problems. Like, all these things, these are crimes, might even be a felony if someone's doing that. So the question is, people walk their dogs, they might be jogging, whatever they're doing, early in the morning or late at night. And the attempt of the alternative is to narrow the people who would be actually committing a crime. Right now, if you walked across the park on your way home from someone's house, from your one side of the street to the other, you'd be committing a crime. And I think what I understood from you is that, yeah, that person wouldn't be, it wouldn't be enforced against that person, just the people that aren't going to cooperate with you. And so it seems like the alternative gets you there. It would be an ordinance, it would be credible. Yeah, if you don't leave you 20 people who are there, then you're subject to arrest, and they would know that. So I'm...
I get where you're coming from, and I understand that progression makes sense. I'm going to talk to you now about the, just the realities of being out there on the graveyard shift, having been a shift commander for years. I don't have the staffing to be able to go and chase these groups. They, they will continue to gather. And when they gather, and we're busy on calls, and we're running call to call, it's going to escalate to a fight, to a shooting. That's what we see time and time again. Once the credibility, because they know, they know, trust me, especially the people that are notorious for breaking the law, they know how far they can push it to where they will be in trouble. So if they know that they can go there and hang out, party, or destroy the bathrooms until they're contacted, before they're, they have committed any crime that they can get them to go to jail, they're going to continue to gather. That actually creates more problems for us, because I don't have, again, like I told you, the response to Franklin Park for that, that group of folks, it took almost every officer that was working in that timeframe just to be able to go and secure that crime scene. These people are, that we're dealing with that are involved in these groups are often very violent and very dangerous. I can't send just one or two officers to go to the park and go and give them their warning and you need to move along. They will challenge us. We, just one of my lieutenants last night tried to do, or on Friday night, tried to do that on his way home at a park, at one of the parking lots in North Division, and had to back off and call in a bunch of resources because they were like, no, they're just not going to cooperate. Unfortunately, we see this insolent behavior with a lot of this, these groups that cause a lot of our problems. I am, if you, if the council wants to come up with some kind of language related to the 5 o'clock dog walker, I understand. I don't think there's any good reason for anybody to be in the park after 11 o'clock at night, myself. I just don't. What's that? Okay. I don't believe that people should be in the park at 11 o'clock at night. Okay? Nothing good happens after 11 o'clock at night. I, we, officers use discretion on laws all the time. We have discretion, because there are those examples of situations where it's either ignorance, or there's no intent, they didn't even realize that they were, they were actually violating the law. We are very good about navigating that. But creating another step for us to jump through, basically will make it still an ineffective law for us.
So I guess my question, though, if, if you don't have the resources to tell groups to disperse, how would you have the resources to arrest them if it was just a crime to be in the park?
So what happens is, when, if you were to grant this change in the law, the first part of it is we do a massive education push to get it out there through media, social media, through the Parks Department, through the Police Department, as well as actually doing some enforcement specials where it would be on education initially, where we would bring in groups, and likely on overtime, because I don't have the staffing regularly, to go out and, and inform these groups, hey, parks are closed, you can't be here, you're violating a law, you can go to jail. We provide warnings over a period of time. Then, for those that don't want to comply, that continue to want to push it, then we will start issuing citations. These will be done through special enforcement. Yes, it will take time to do that. But once we get it established that if you come to the parks after hours, you can be arrested, the gatherings, this is our historical experience with the parking lots, they quit gathering there, they go somewhere else. Then we don't have to constantly chase it. Whereas if they know I have to come and talk to them first, they're going to continue to gather. And we're, it's just, it'll be a constant whack-a-mole. We're going to have to make an investment in the, in the front end to go out there and do enforcement, to do education, do enforcement, to get, to gain credibility with the violator, with the potential offender, that they know that, ah, if I do this, I can go to jail, or I can get a criminal citation, I'm not going to gather there anymore. That will be the deterrent, that's now a deterrent. And that's the goal. We want deterrence, not so we can stack up a bunch of stats for, for misdemeanor violations and arrests. The manner in which you're proposing, Council President, which will require us to that constant having to make contact, having to make contact, and we're never able to establish that you cannot gather. They can still gather until they're told not to. And that we never get to the second phase of that, which is, we have credibility that you will be arrested if you violate the law, they will, they will take their business elsewhere. Yes, Councilmember?
I remembered. Who are these people? Are they adults? Are they juveniles?
All over the map. So that's a great question. I'm glad you asked it. So we have a wide variety of people that will gather. Some of it's neighborhood dependent, some of it is time of year dependent, some of it is just luck that they're out. Dwight Merkel is probably the most, I would say, diverse as far as age and just demographics of people that respond there. We have, in one of the shootings last year, there's a person I knew who's very, fairly high ranking in a different law enforcement entity, that had his son was actually at Dwight Merkel when one of the shootings occurred. He is not a criminal, they were just up there hanging out, a bunch of, him and a bunch of his friends. And another group that wasn't associated to him, words got exchanged, it escalated to a gunfight, and somebody got struck by bullets. That's one example. The Dutch Jake Park, those individuals that were involved in that had, have suspected gang affiliation. Some, it, it's all over the map. So some of it can be gang members, some of it's not, some of it's just teenagers partying. Some of the, in the Dwight Merkel incident I talked about, the shooter was actually an adult male, you know, I want to say late twenties, that was arrested in that shooting. So it's all over the map. Our big thing is, is we just need to have people know that they're not allowed to gather here at night to do what they're doing. And they just can't be in the parks after, after hours. So...
So I know we have to wind this up. I was just going to ask Mary if you can help me with this. I wanted councils to know that Captain Hendren, myself, and Councilmember Cathcart are meeting with the Equity Committee tomorrow.
Correct, 9:30.
To go through the ordinance. One of the discussions we had was to, was the ability to track events and make sure that we have the numbers and the information to the public saying, here's who was arrested, here's racial background, color, that kind of thing, so that we're kind of keeping a balance there. And I just wanted people to know that that's going through the Equity, or the Equity Committee tomorrow.
And real quick, on that topic, because I'm glad you brought that up, too, Councilmember, we already have built-in our systems ways to monitor that data to know exactly what we're doing.
Okay.
Now, call for service data, we don't track in the same way we do officer-initiated, because if a call for service comes in, we're responding to it, as far as demographics. I mean, we don't control who decides to call us. Officer-initiated is a totally different ballgame. So any officer-initiated contact and enforcement of the park rules by an officer's choice would be that very thing. Any contact, we will identify the reason for the contact, the demographics of the race, the gender, and the age of the individual. That gets recorded every time. So whether there's enforcement action taken or not, and we'll know whether there was an arrest, a warrant arrest, verbal warning, what have you, that all gets tracked. Then actual arrest data is very easy to track, because we can just look at and pull up who's been charged with park rules violations, and we can give that whenever the council wants that, we can provide that information. We can also then, too, we've built a PowerBI, our Crime Analysis Unit has, to track every incident that occurs within our city parks, so we can look to see, are we gaining the ground that we're looking to do? Our goal, from the Police Department standpoint, the property damage is a huge concern, don't get me wrong, but our number one concern is, we had nine people that were struck by gunfire in city parks last year. We have got to get control of this. That, we had one fatality, one fatality is way too many. We can't afford to let this continue to where we see more fatalities. That's our big goal, is we need to gain control of the parks, and we need a tool that gives our officers the authority to go in there and make those contacts and keep people out of there. Again, Council President, I totally empathize, where I don't want to be criminalized for being in the park either. And I'm fine, and this is where I'm speaking probably for parks, and they're probably going to throw something at me for this. I'm fine with negotiating the hours to some extent. My bulk of my problem is 11 o'clock at night till 5:00 in the morning. That's when I have my problems. And if I can keep them from gathering after 11 o'clock at night, that's, and, you know, really, once we get through about 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, we're, we're in the green, we're good. That's not when those groups tend to gather anymore. I understand, somebody doesn't want to, hey, I like to jog at the park at 5:00 o'clock in the morning, I don't want to be considered a criminal by doing that. Obviously, that, our intent on this law is not to, not to enforce that. And I don't know how you could create language in there, but if you were able to create language that the city legal is comfortable with, that specifically identified something like that, I would probably be okay with it. It's just if we create where I, every time, in order to enforce, I have to go and, and tell them, you can't be here, it's, it's going to create almost more work... them, you can't be here, it's gonna create almost more work than we have right now for us. So, okay.
One more, we gotta...
I would advocate for 5:00 instead of 6:00, Garrett, because I know a lot of people are dog walkers. In fact, we'd have to reprimand our very own former city attorney to not walk at 5:00 in the morning. So, I would advocate, just move, bump that up, you know, 5:00, especially in summertime, when it's cool, that's when people want to walk their dog or jog or whatever.
And happy to work with Shawna to figure out what kind of report would make sense. We could just put something in our monthly public safety that folks, just like we do with Sit-Li and others...
I'm sure we could easily do that.
Yeah, and that's, I think, what we talked about, was having that information available when we needed it. Mary, do you want to add anything or say anything?
I think Captain Hendren and Garrett Jones were very comprehensive. If any of you have any particular questions of a legal nature, and I think this is just simple, we're just changing the infraction to a misdemeanor and putting it back to where it happened.
Mary, could you use the microphone, sorry?
Yeah, sorry about that. So, the comments prior to my coming up here, I think were completely comprehensive. If any of you have any questions, this is just a simple change in the penalty from the infraction to the misdemeanor, just on the premise that it's a trespass. So, this would be putting it on parity with any other public building, location, or anything else that has closure, hours of closure. It would be a trespass to come onto those properties.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Mary. Okay, we will move right into our Blake Response discussion. I've got Bree in down, are you leading this?
Yeah, Councilmember Kinnear and I. Yeah, we, after the legislature didn't reach compromise on drug possession and public use laws, they had a pretty comprehensive response that made it illegal to both possess illegal drugs, and there's really three kinds that are mentioned in the legislature. One are the ones we kind of think of as illegal drugs, but they're called controlled substances in the law, so that would be like your heroin and methamphetamine, those kinds of drugs. Then, there's what they call legend drugs. Those are drugs you can get, but only with a prescription. So, oxycodone, oxycontin, think that. And then, there are counterfeit drugs, which are something that, they're not what they appear to be. And so, that's the state scheme of things. Once that fell apart, as you know, the laws that are currently on the books expire June 30th, absent a special session. And so, we asked City Legal to assist us in putting together something more broader and more comprehensive than the public spaces law, to address the situation that if the legislature doesn't convene in time, July 1st, we'll have something. And secondly, that would be consistent with state law, so that we don't get a lot of legal challenges in the next few weeks. It'll only be a few weeks until we, that July 1st laws go into effect. The worry was that we would try to enforce a city version of a law that was inconsistent with state law, and then we'd have lots of appeals, we'd be spending all our money on that instead of drug treatment and policing. So, we got a really good version back, and it attempts to mirror the compromise by the Senate and the House Conference Committee. Not exactly, because they covered more than we would cover in a city. We've shared it with Majority Leader Bilig, and he's enthusiastic about it, both because it would be good for Spokane, starting as soon as we could pass it on an emergency basis, maybe next week. And secondly, he thought it could lead the way towards a compromise of the legislature and get them to do something comprehensive. The piece that I think have been the most I've heard about is, because state law makes drug possession a simple misdemeanor right now, we didn't make the change to gross misdemeanor until July 1st. Otherwise, you'd get those court challenges. And the public use-only crime is potentially a possession crime as well, and who knows how the courts will figure that out. So, it would be simple misdemeanor from, say, May 8th, if we passed it on an emergency basis until June 30th, then it would be gross misdemeanor. It also, there's a lot of complications in the state law about whether or not a city has a drug court or not. This would just refer everyone into community court right away, so they're essentially in a drug court type of situation. The city might create its own specific drug court at some point, but community court would do it. So, they're automatically going right there to get that treatment, and then, of course, if they wash out of that, they go back to what we call the Alpha Docket, and they're subject to the same jail components that would be in the state compromise that are out there, up to a year in jail on the gross misdemeanor. And then, we also had, we heard before that the jail currently is not keeping people in jail for misdemeanors, if it's not DUI or domestic violence. And so, our officers, if they try to book someone in the jail, are just stuck waiting at the Sallyport, and they're off-site. So, this, like many other laws that we've had before, doesn't have an initial booking into the jail, because they just release people right afterwards. But if they don't go to community court, or they wash out of community court, they get a warrant for failure to appear, and then the jail is much more likely to keep them in jail if they're not gonna take up the treatment option. So, I think those are the main things.
And then, talk about, we added not just use in public, but use and possession, so that we know that the majority of the deaths of overdose aren't in public. In fact, they're behind closed doors. And our aim should be to reduce those deaths down to zero. So, we wanted to make sure that piece was in there. And there was one other thing that we, oh, loitering. I asked Council President, how many, how many people have been charged with loitering, let's say, in the last year or two? And the answer was zero. So, that just further complicated, we felt, and it was a potential for profiling. So, we took out the loitering piece, because honestly, we really don't need it to make this ordinance stick and to be enforceable, so that piece was removed as well.
And just to follow up on that, so, loitering is already illegal, and the current version that's before us on First Reading Tonight, didn't change much of it, but the penalty to it. And if we are gonna revisit the loitering, it probably needs a lot of work and an upgrade, and so, I thought on the same principle of keep things simple, let's just do the possession and use right now. Once the legislature finishes their work on it, or if they decide not to go to special session, we could revisit the loitering. But it is on the books, it's just not utilized currently.
So, I guess I have questions. I got an email, and I don't know if Chief Lundgren can speak to this, but he had shared some concerns over their ability to enforce on the cite and release, I think, provision, if I got that correct. And so, I'd love to have, get him to respond or to share those comments, but I guess I would also just wonder, I mean, what is the risk of an officer running afoul of state law, you know, risking decertification if they're engaging in force over something that is a cite and release kind of a policy? I don't know the answer to that, and so, I'm just, I'm curious if that, is that the concern? Is that...
So, good afternoon, Council. When you have a criminal code that is only cite and release, it does not allow the officer, obviously, to take that person into custody and book them into jail. And though that isn't our goal, and much like Captain Hendren shared, part of this is setting an expectation of behavior, and once that is set, we hope that the enforcement and the compliance, it acts as a deterrent, and we see the behavior decrease. The problem that we have with a cite and release-only criminal code is that there is, if the person doesn't cooperate, if they don't provide their information, we're not able to take that person into custody. And so, we may not know who they are to issue the citation and affect the arrest, and we certainly aren't gonna be able to get all of the evidence that they may have, or the other drugs they may have in their possession. The second issue is, it has to do with the search that we do incident to an arrest, a custodial arrest. If an officer makes an arrest for a crime that can be a custodial arrest, and they have an option to book somebody into jail, they can do a search incident to arrest. And that's where we will be able to recover any other drugs or weapons or other contraband that would be on their person at the time that they were taken into custody. If we know at the time of the arrest that there is no chance that they will be booked into jail, we cannot do, we can't complete that search by case law. And so, for those two main reasons, I think, it wouldn't, this code wouldn't be as effective as it possibly could be.
Okay. Questions?
So, if you don't cite and release and you arrest, then they go to jail, but they don't stay there, right? I mean, they get, I mean, it's, that's what I understand. That's what I'm confused about.
So, if we have, whether it be a misdemeanor or a gross misdemeanor that's on the books, we can cite and release for that. And that's typically what we'll do with a misdemeanor offense, is we will cite and release. If the person we're dealing with knows that if they don't cooperate, if they don't provide their information, then they leave us with no other alternative, and we'll have to take custody of them and take them to jail. That's the alternative. So, that provides them an incentive to cooperate and provide us that opportunity. If we have no, if we have no means to take them to jail, then we can't search them incident to arrest, and that is another issue and another concern. And we really can't move people along either, if there's no ability to book them into jail. If they decide they're just gonna stay right where they're at and continue to do the same type of behavior, we're really left with no other recourse.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Could I ask Ms. Mayor Matsu to come up? Because now, I'm all confused. I thought we covered this pretty thoroughly. I wonder if you could address Assistant Chief's concerns?
Yeah, and just the, whether or not that's obstructing not to cooperate with a criminal citation as opposed to infraction?
Well, I think, first of all, I think the Assistant Chief makes some valid points. You know, when you have a crime, that crime, subject to case law, is an arrestable offense, it's a bookable offense, and the officer has certain Terry stop authority, and that Terry stop authority is to inquire and find out who that person is, check them for warrants, pat down for weapons, and book them if they have to or can. Every crime is bookable, even simple misdemeanors are bookable. And so, when we take away those tools, it creates some interesting vacuums in terms of what their authority actually is. So, when you have somebody who is being stopped, and there's probable cause for a crime, but you can't book them, the question becomes, well, can I search them incident to arrest? Well, the search incident to arrest was intended for a couple of reasons. One, to keep the officer safe in case that person had knives or something else in their pockets that might be reachable. In fact, there's a U.S. Supreme Court case that talks about, they expect that people that are gonna be arrested are probably gonna reach for weapons, and they're probably gonna fight the officer. And they may have evidence on their person that is going to disappear, that they will try to reach for and throw out and get rid of before the officer gets a chance to search them. But you lose all that when you don't make it bookable.
You can't do a Terry stop? You don't need to book someone, just reasonable suspicion of committing a crime for a Terry stop?
Well, you can find out who they are, but I think the Assistant Chief's...
And do a pat down for weapons?
Well, it depends. I mean, so, there is definitely conflicting case law, and if you look at the search and seizure treatises that was written by two of our Supreme Court justices, that is an unsolved question. I mean, it's for the purpose of taking a person and booking them.
But not Terry. Terry is not whether you have probable cause for a crime, it's just a reasonable suspicion of a crime.
But the justices talk about the bookable offense, the search incident to arrest that goes with Terry.
No, I know, search incident to arrest, that's one kind of search, but Terry stop is a different kind of search.
Well, but all of that is part of what an officer does as a predicate to booking a person into custody. So, when you take a crime that by definition is bookable, it's arrestable and bookable, and you say it's not bookable, all of a sudden, you're muddying what is clear law enforcement authority. And that's particularly problematic for drug offenses, where that's what people do, they conceal drugs in their pockets, and they also conceal weapons. And so, now, you're saying officers can't book them into the jail, but that's part of being a crime, is it's a bookable offense. So, now, we're curbing the authority of police officers.
I just, I just want to be super. A Terry stop does not have anything to do with booking into jail. It's the question of whether or not you have a reasonable suspicion.
I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about the two different topics that the Assistant Chief brought up.
No, I'm just talking about Terry stop. You can search, you can do a pat down search, you can get their name and information on a Terry stop, just on reasonable suspicion, regardless of...
I wasn't questioning that. I was addressing the Assistant Chief's second problem with regard to search incident to arrest.
Yep.
When we say, there is a lot of case law talking about the booking of an offender and the search that goes incident to that bookable arrest. In fact, that's what Justice Stevens talks about in her treatise, is it's search incident to the booking, not just search incident to the arrest, which can be a cite and release, it's when you anticipate you're gonna take that person to jail. So, it muddies it significantly.
But is enforcement, would this be a Terry stop? I mean, is that how this would be?
Well, you can do a Terry stop, because as long as you have reasonable suspicion, this is what the Council President was talking about, as long as you have reasonable suspicion, you can stop somebody and detain them to investigate whether or not there's probable cause.
And so, what are you allowed, what's allowed to be investigated? How can you investigate?
Well, when you have a reasonable suspicion that a person is committing or has committed a crime, then you can stop that person and inquire and find out who they are, and that's, you can run them for warrants, you can check the law enforcement databases, you can pat them down for weapons.
So, what does that mean, pat them down?
You can actually pat them down, you can search them for weapons.
Can you, can you search inside their pockets?
Well, so, the search incident to arrest, and maybe the Assistant Chief can talk about this more, but there is a pre-arrest search, and then there's a post-arrest search. So, the pre-arrest search is what we think of as the Terry stop pre-arrest search, and the officer is essentially patting down for weapons to ensure that the person isn't gonna pull a knife or harm the officer in connection with that investigatory detention. When the officer, once the officer develops probable cause, the officer is allowed to do a search incident to booking. And so, the booking has to do with whether or not there is evanescent evidence that might disappear in connection with that arrest, or it may be that there's also a safety issue, the officer needs to secure that individual to ensure that that person can be safely transported to be booked into the jail. People that won't identify themselves, you won't know who they are until we run them through AFIS, and that's a fingerprint-based background check through the AFIS system, and that's over at the jail. So, these are some of the problems. When you take a crime, which is by definition arrestable and bookable, and you say, but we're gonna limit that authority, then Spokane, Washington is acting contrary to state law and everywhere else that says a crime is a crime is a crime, and it's arrestable and bookable. And I think those are the concerns that we have about drug crimes in particular.
So, but from a functional, I guess, practical point of view, so if you've got an individual openly using, and the officer engages that individual, are they allowed, in that process, are they allowed to search their pockets to actually confiscate something from them?
So, during a Terry stop, if there are articulable factors that lead you to believe that someone may have weapons, and it can be their behavior, it can be the presence of, like, the way that they're clothing, bulges in their pockets, those sorts of things, you can pat them down as Ms. Mayor Matsu was just talking about. And what that is, is you're searching for weapons, an external search for weapons. If you feel something that looks like, or feels like a controlled substance, or something that might be contraband but is not a weapon, you are not allowed to go and remove that item from their person.
So, I just want to be clear, though, so what we're saying is, somebody's openly using, we're not gonna confiscate, we're gonna give them a ticket, and we're gonna leave them there.
No, you can confiscate. If you see the drugs, that's contraband.
But how are you gonna get the rest of the drugs from them if you're not allowed to search?
Confiscate for that, and if you have another reason to arrest them, and if they don't cooperate, then that's obstructing an officer, and that is arrestable. So, you...
Can you? If they don't cooperate, are you then allowed to use force?
So, obstructing requires that you hinder or delay a law enforcement in the continuance of a criminal investigation. So, if someone does not identify themselves, and it doesn't matter if it's a low-level crime or homicide, that you have a suspect detained, they are under no obligation to speak to you. So, you can detain them to try and determine who, you know, who they are, you can use investigative techniques to try and determine their identity. At the end of the day, if they don't tell you who they are, and you can only cite and release them, you are left with no other option but to release them. You cannot arrest them for obstructing to get around their Fifth Amendment, right?
So, in all of this, you drive away, another officer comes upon them, they're doing it... it again in that same place, is there any mechanism that elevates or escalates this? Because now they're recidivism, or recidivist, open user?
So, well, there's a reason why the criminal code is, is, very, very rarely do you have an offense that is a non-bookable offense. Almost every crime, even administrative-type crimes, have a, have a penalty where they can be booked. And it's for, I think for this very reason, it's more serious than an infraction, and it requires that, that people cooperate. If you go back 30 years, there would be no cite and release. Criminal offenses were typically booked into jail. Now broadly, misdemeanor offenses are, are cite and release. If you have a non-bookable offense and someone does a continuing pattern of the same non-bookable behavior, you're, you're stuck with the same tools that you have. Yeah, there's, there's no escalation.
Other questions? Comments? Okay. Well, I guess we'll see what happens at 3:30. Thank you. Okay. Is there anything else on this? No? Okay. Missing persons, Major McNabb? And so this was a, a request I made-
Councilmember Cathcart, while legal's up here, can we also ask about diversion? That would be a part of that?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Real quick, but yeah, please.
Sure. Thank you for having me. I don't know if Ms. Meramatsu wants to join as well, but we have our prosecutor's office, we do quite a few diversion programs. We do diversion for mental health cases, people that have profound, profound mental health issues, we'll divert them through the system, they go to get a diagnosis, whether they have chemical dependency or just mental health.
Just to be more focused-
Sure.
With this drug use, it would be encouraging for the prosecutor to use it, I'm just trying to understand how that would be implemented.
And absolutely. So we could do that by policy. We could just tell the prosecutor's office that we want to divert first-time drug use and we want people to go get a chemical dependency evaluation and do follow-up treatment. If they do that after six months, a year, whatever we decide as far as our policy, we could dismiss the case at that time. We, absolutely. We do that on other cases now, it's just what I was trying to make a point of.
Would that be the plan for both versions, or do these versions have differences between the two?
It would be a discussion, well, if we don't write it into the ordinance, and I would encourage us not to, then we would do it through our prosecutor's office and we would have that conversation. And, and we would decide, what does that look like? We do it on, we don't divert domestic violence cases, but we, we have kind of a policy on domestic violence cases, the first kind, first-time cases, or offer a stipulated or of continuance. So we don't go straight to conviction on domestic violence cases. It would be akin to that. So it'd be, it'd be a policy and it would be a discussion we have, and then we implement that policy.
Are there currently policies around that? Because-
We don't have drug possession right now.
Oh, right.
Because they're felonies. So, so everything we're talking about now, two years ago, they were filed with, with the county prosecutor's office. So we, we just don't have experience with it right now. We, we handle DUIs and they're a little bit alike, but there's an active driving part of that. So we just, this is new ground for us, we'll have to talk through that.
But essentially the two are very similar, is that right? Between the two versions?
It's just the enforcement part. Yeah. Okay.
And that's the good thing. Our prop, since we run our prosecutor's office, we're not giving these off to the county prosecutor's office, we have that discretion. We can, we can talk about what we want our policies to be, and then we just implement those. Whereas when we give our cases to the county prosecutor's office, whatever happens, happens. So.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Major, if you wanna come on up? This was something I had asked, we've had a couple of folks come down and open forum and talk about some missing persons, and I just felt like we should probably elevate this a little bit and, and talk about this from time to time. And so I'm gonna try to, on a reoccurring basis, have just some missing persons numbers that we can track in our reports. And just, Major McNabb will give us a little bit of an overview on, on what we're looking at and what's going on.
You got it. This is, Good afternoon, Counsel. Giacobi, I think I have a PowerPoint.
Great.
It's a-
I'm not seeing it in the public safety folder for today. Was it emailed?
I sent it to Shay, so-
Okay.
Yeah. If it's not available, that's quite all right.
I'll try to track it down.
That's not a big deal. It's also in your packet, so we can look at it there. There's a, probably the best thing to look at would be the graph, the rest of it's just an overview of what our missing persons unit does and how that, how that works and it progresses through the system. So, missing persons is basically broken into three categories. We have our traditional missing persons, which is any person under 12 years old, any situation where we have unusual, unexplained, or suspicious circumstances, or we have somebody who is in danger due to age, health, mental or medical conditions, or the weather. And then we have anybody that left a court-ordered involuntary treatment facility. Those are, those are what we classify as a missing person. The next category is a runaway, and that's the majority of our cases, and that is any person who's left home on their own volition between the ages of 13 and 17. And then we created a new classification last year called information-only, basically, where we have people who are looking for a loved one, a friend, but there's no indication of danger, there's nothing criminal going on, and they're not a juvenile. Oftentimes, we find this as family members, friends, trying to monitor the activity of, you know, estranged family members or friends, or divorce proceedings, financial problems, civil actions, those sorts of things. And it's not the business of the police department to get involved in that type of stuff. But we do look at each and every one of these cases for any type of danger to that person. They're all kind of triaged on an individual basis, based on the severity and those risk factors. And that could look like a widespread patrol response for a missing child, or that could be something that we kind of follow up on. If it came in on a Friday, we'd follow up on a Monday to, to see where it's at, make some phone calls, that type of thing. Like I said, 65% of our cases are juvenile runaways, requiring some type of minimal follow-up where we're making phone calls to see if the child's returned, and that sort of thing. Most of our cases are resolved over the phone. We have some civilian staff that help us work on these cases, they triage all these cases, consult with our major crimes sergeants if they detect anything that's unusual, suspicious activity where this could escalate into more than just a missing person. So there was some emails, Councilmember Cathcart, about what, what benchmarks do we start to escalate our missing person investigations? And that generally begins at 30 days. If there's nothing before then that would make us want to, to do more because of certain risk factors or suspicious activity that would make us escalate it into a criminal investigation before that. But if it's just a missing person, at 30 days, we begin to post it to our website, start reaching out to the family to collect dental records, collect DNA samples from, from family members. We start to work with the medical examiner's office to see if there's any sort of maybe related missing person cases or unidentified human remains cases that they're working on. We start to work with NAMUS, which is the National Missing and Unidentified Person System. And then after 30 days, they are all assigned to investigator where they have, that investigator has a 30-day responsibility to make contact with the reporting party. And then after a year, then they make annual contact. So the last page is probably the only thing I wanted to put up on the screen, but I'll just try to talk you-
It is up there.
Oh, there we go. Look at that. Okay. So as you can see, the majority of our cases are, are runaways. And after we added the info-only category, we did, we were able to reduce our workload and lower the amount of missing person cases we have to pay attention to, which is beneficial, allows us to spend more time focusing on the cases that need our attention rather than trying to run through the glut of everything else that is, is on our plate. So we have 25 unsolved missing person cases dating back to 1985. One of those is a juvenile currently. Some of those, a handful, we suspect are criminal investigations, up until related to homicide. And the rest are, are just missing for various reasons. You really have to get into the details of each case to, to kind of get a feel for what's happening, so.
So the relationship with the indigenous community-
Yes.
How was that captured? And I know we were working on an MOU for our urban tribal members. Tell me what, how you capture that information and then work. I think one of those oldest cases is poss, I think a Native American person, if I'm not misunderstanding. So what does that look like for that community?
It has gotten so much better over the past three years. The state legislature passed a law, I don't remember what year it was, but they created two state liaisons for the missing murdered indigenous persons. I don't wanna mess that up, but those folks. And we have, now have one on the east side liaison that we work with on a regular basis, and they're employed by the state. They send out a list regularly, they send out daily updates on new missing person cases in our area. So we do have a, a very good working relationship with those folks.
So if they're, why don't you go ahead?
Oh, I was just gonna ask, what's the update on the status of the MOU with Native Project?
I don't know. I'm sorry, that's not in, not, not something I was working on personally.
I think that's actually city administrator Johnny Perkins, last I heard, that was not through the chief.
I guess with regards to runaways, what would be, I mean, I guess what would be the difference in, you're gonna address it kind of within that 24-hour sort of, you know, we're gonna get right on this versus waiting the 30 days? I mean, what, what are the factors that you're looking for that, to actually say, nope, this person did in fact run away, it, you know, there, there's not some other factors? I mean, does it have to be real obvious? Or, I mean, is there a lot of investigation that goes in right up front just to make sure?
Yeah, so that's gonna start at the patrol level. You know, parents gonna call in and say, you know, Billy's been missing, he's never been missing before, he's 13 years old, so he's just making that runaway cutoff, he's mentally affected, it's 20 degrees out, and he's never done this before. That's something we're gonna jump on right away. When we've got the other Billy who's 16 years old and has run away 45 times in the past year, that's gonna get a different response from us. Same to go for adult missing person cases. When we have the same type of risk factors, where we have, say, for example, an Alzheimer's patient, it's very cooled out, they've never worn off before, and then we'll start to escalate those cases. There are state resources we can use, I'm sure you've seen them on the billboards with Amber Alerts, Silver Alerts, all those things. We have to meet certain criteria. To put, push those out, I mean, we have to have, we have to have information that's useful. We can't have vague information. We have to have very descriptive information that's gonna be helpful to the public by putting out the, that type of alert, because we don't wanna inundate the public with alert after alert toward the point where they don't pay attention to them anymore.
And then is there a, a point where, I mean, is there any kind of follow-up just to, you know, after 30 days or after a period of time to, to check you back in, you know, with the family? If it's been deemed they were runaway, do you check back in with the family routinely, see if they've come back? I guess just what, what is that, what is that process like? Because when you say there's only 25 that are really missing, that, I mean, that's, that's great. How do we just know that for a fact? Like, how are we confident in that number?
So if, if they're, if they've been missing longer than 30 days, they're assigned to a detective. And that detective's obligated to make contact with the family monthly, or the reporting party monthly. If a year's gone by, then that benchmark becomes yearly. In some cases, where we suspect that there's criminal aspects to it, or it could be a homicide, then we, we could transition that to our cold case unit. Or it, they're all with our major crimes unit, and depending on the circumstances, without getting into a ton of detail, they escalate based on all those little nuances of the case, how much detention they're gonna get, and, and if there's any leads to follow up on.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Appreciate it. Let's see, do we have our risk manager here yet? No? Okay. Then we're still waiting on them, so we will go to the fleet purchase of a Sprinter van. Get that taken care of. And then we've got municipal court and some track conversation following that.
Good afternoon, Counsel. This is just a purchase of a Sprinter van, a diesel, all-wheel-drive Sprinter van for police property from Guy Automotive in Liberty Lake. We use a DES contract. We selected diesel because there isn't really a viable all-wheel-drive battery electric vehicle on the market to, to do this job. And so this doesn't usually get moved to, to discussion, so any questions you might have, I'm happy to answer. Yes?
I have no idea what that is.
A Sprinter van?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a, a van that they're gonna be using to haul property, seize property, that type of thing, from the property department. And so it's a, it's essentially just a van, diesel van, all-wheel-drive van.
16-passenger?
They tend to be-
Cargo van.
Taller and longer.
And you're hauling property from where to where?
I'm not hauling it at all, so the police, the, the police will need to, so they, they have the, the property facility, so they need to move that property from time to time for various different reasons.
Okay.
Major McNabb wants to answer that?
Yeah, so the property facility makes several trips to the state crime lab, which is out in Cheney. And then they also pick up property down in our basement, we have temporary lockers there that they pick it up and transport it.
Is it really a Mercedes?
It's what?
Is it a Mercedes?
It might be, they make a lot of these.
They, they're the ones that make the Sprinter vans.
They were branded Dodge for a while, but it's, it's a Mercedes platform. It's not fancy, though.
Does it say Mercedes on it?
It does, yes.
Yes. Couldn't find a Volkswagen? Okay.
They don't make one, I'm sorry.
And quick question, what is considered the end of its economic life for a Sprinter van?
On, on something like that, it's usually 10 years, 100,000 miles. Those diesels will tend to go a little bit longer, but I, I don't anticipate we would keep it that, you know, past 10 years.
But this one we're replacing is about that?
It's, yeah, it's, and in fact, I'm not even exactly sure, but I think they're using multiple different vehicles to, to do this job.
Okay. Nothing else? Moving along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonya, do you wanna come on down and, she was gonna introduce the risk manager candidate or selectee, I guess?
Yes, thank you, councilmembers. After a very long, involved process, we are gonna be very happy to present to you for confirmation, a risk manager. Scott is going to be the, the appointed risk manager. He comes very, very well-qualified. He was the risk manager for many years for the state of Alaska, which also has a myriad of services such as what we have, transportation, policing, parks, recreation, general government. So he has a broad breadth of experience. He is gonna be here, I think he has a one-on-one with at least Councilmember Wilkinson on Wednesday. So part of the process in finding the best appointee is, one, just a round of interviews that we do to determine fit and competency. He came, he was very, very qualified, definitely in the top three candidates. But then we do another interview panel with departments, our customer departments, who we serve. So he went through that round, he also rose to the very top of that round. And then we do a staff or team panel. So then he goes through a round with all of those team folks that he's gonna work directly with, and also was very clearly astounding as the number one candidate. Then he moves on and has an interview with Johnny Perkins and the mayor. And she ultimately decided that he is the best fit, so we're happy to bring him forward to you for his confirmation.
Great.
Any further questions? I hope you get a chance to meet him, I think you'll be very, very impressed, as we all were.
Look forward to it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howard? Municipal Court? Well, I have Sarah Thompson listed, is that who's presenting?[1751.92]
Is that who's presenting? Sorry. I have Sarah Thompson listed. Is that the presenter or are you presenting?
I was gonna do it.
Okay, yeah, come on down.
Good afternoon, counsel. Thank you very much for having me. We actually put an initial item on the agenda, which is to talk a little bit about our processes and how the court is bound by the law. Council president always, also asked me to give an update on our PSU unit and other, sorry, initiatives in community justice services. So I went old school and actually dropped a paper on each of your positions. So I'd like to briefly talk about the question of holding people in jail, both pre and post-sentence. Just so when you're debating ordinances, you're all sort of on the same page on how this works. Let's talk about the average person who gets arrested and taken to jail and then appears before the court either on a misdemeanor or a gross misdemeanor, because those are what we see in municipal court. So I, I gave you a copy of CRR LJ 3.2, which is the court rule that governs release. The important discussion here, you'll see in sub-paragraph A, is there is a presumption stated in the rule that in non-capital cases, misdemeanors aren't murder or anything like that, that there's a presumption of release unless one of two things can be found. One is that the person is likely not to appear. And the second reason you can keep them is they pose a community, danger to the community. So let's talk about the first prong, which allows you to keep people. That's fail to appear, right? So if a person has a repeated history of failed to appear, that can be considered in determining their release status. However, even if you decide you're going to keep someone, you have to set bail in an amount that's reasonable based upon their economic circumstances. For instance, if I have someone that's below the poverty line and comes into custody and bail is being set for a misdemeanor. If a person had a regular income, $1,000 bail or a $2,500 bail would probably not be out of line. For a person that basically has no resources or money, a $2,500 bail setting might as well be a million dollars in that they're not leaving custody normally, unless their, you know, grandma's posting for them or something like that. So when you're talking about bail, you're not only talking in the FTA, you're not only talking about the person failing to appear, you've gotta balance their economic status and ability in that quotient. The next one is basically they're a substantial danger to the community. Now, you can only keep them under that prong. And there are several things you can consider. Their criminal record, willingness of people to basically vouch for them and take care of them, the nature of the charge, their reputation, their mental condition. And, and then there's interference with the administration of justice. Have they threatened or intimidated witnesses, things like that? Now, in being a danger to community, it isn't necessarily that narrow band of violent crimes as defined in the revised code of Washington, but they do have to be crimes that pose a danger. Generally, simple possession of drugs, either legend or otherwise, is not one of those events in Washington case law. So there's a real question pre-trial, particularly with the jail and the statuses that it is, whether even if we want to keep them, though, will. But we have to make pretty specific findings to hold someone pre-trial, particularly on a, something like a simple possession case. And that's whether it's a gross or a simple misdemeanor. The other thing is, is even if we release you on your own recognizance, we have to impose the least restrictive conditions. Under current Washington law, imposing something like drug treatment pre-trial is not possible. They can voluntarily do things like that, but we can't order it pre-trial even though we can order it post. Pre-trial, we can say you may not possess or consume alcohol or non-prescribed drugs. And even prescribed drugs, you can't use them outside of the terms of the prescription. Absolutely easy to do. Monitoring that many times becomes the hard part. We can, of course, impose drug testing, which we do on a pretty consistent basis. But again, that's pretty expensive stuff at about $30 a test. And frankly, our population that comes through the court is generally about 75% to 85% on the indigency rate. So those people, although I can order you to take a drug test, if you can't pay for it, I can't put you in jail because you didn't willfully refuse to do it, you can't afford it. Which means, and many times you've seen me here asking for alcohol and drug testing money, because for that group, basically if we want them tested, the city ends up paying for those tests. And we do that through a voucher system. And again, we only do that when someone has already been determined after screening to be indigent. But it's something to be cognizant of. Because a lot of things sound, you know, pretty easy if you just look at them on the surface. But the things we can actually do and the real cost of it sometimes are a little different. Post-sentence, if someone is convicted, we can actually order you to get an evaluation and go through whatever treatment. Using the CJF department, we can actually sign you up for ACA, which will pay most of the cost of that treatment. So that's definitely a doable thing. When you start talking about imposing jail, let's talk about misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor. Misdemeanor's 90 days max, gross misdemeanor 364 days max, right? However, when you put them in the correctional institution, in this case, the county jail, assuming they don't violate the rules, they're entitled to good time. So principally, a 90-day sentence ends up to be, with a third off, a 60-day sentence max. And a one-year sentence ends up to be 270 days. So if we just look at the costs associated with that, and again, Ms. Wallace probably has much better numbers, mine are old. And even though we pay jail on a percentage basis of our use, we generally talk about jail costing in this jurisdiction, something between $120 and $130 a day. And that might be a little light, given the inflationary trends that we've seen. But again, Ms. Wallace probably have a much better handle on that than I did. So really quickly, I just did a little math for you, picking the middle of that at 125. If you want to put someone in jail for, for any crime for 270 days, which is the max on a gross misdemeanor following good time, that's $33,750 to incarcerate that person for that length of time. On a 90-day sentence, which translates to 60 days following good time, that's $7,500 at $125 a day. So again, when we look at what facilities we use to incarcerate people charged with this stuff, the county jail as it stands happens to be a fairly expensive mechanism for doing that. I know that we don't have a jail contract right now, and I believe the administration is looking at alternatives. But as we design programs, which I'm gonna talk about CJF in a minute, most of our goal is to try to, to the extent possible, keep people out of custody until their behavior just becomes so bad and they're unwilling to change their behavior. And then it's a place of last result, and that's primarily based on the cost and the fact that it has historically not been really very effective in preventing crime as a whole.
Howard, we only have a couple minutes, so just to-
Okay, so really quick, and this was the, the important part of this. Let's talk about the funds. Counsel was kind enough to provide for expansion of these programs. Pre-trial services unit PSU, it's just been doing phenomenally. I will say that even though you provided the money for expansion on January 1, we have to get through the civil service hiring process. And we are literally just now hiring the last of the, what you would previously call probation officers, now community justice counselors. And we haven't been able to hire the support staff yet. But the list is actually out there and we're interviewing. So big deal for us. If we look at a baseline period for PSU, which is on page two, we basically had holding people on bond 52% of the time in the index period to 2019, right? And now, we were, sorry, now we actually hold them far less. Time to disposition, under the old model, 251 days. Now we're down to 92. Failed to appear rate cut in half. Custody rate, average time used to be 11.57 days of incarceration, now 1.25. Warrant issuance way down. So what we're doing is actually keeping these folks in jail less, which is less money. They're warranting less, they're committing less crimes. And it seems to be successful all the way around. The, the numbers you're seeing are from a limited amount of crimes, DV, DUI. The expansion money you gave it will broaden it to all crimes. And we should have that data probably end of the meaningful data. You need, you know, some time in collecting it by the end of the second quarter, or third quarter, sorry. So if we looked at electronic monitoring unit, monitoring now a lot of people, we're just getting that unit up to full speed. We'll cut down the time to get them hooked up so we know we can take a DV offender, release them from jail, get them hooked up in 24 hours. The cost savings versus, for instance, if you're alcohol testing someone, we can monitor you 24/7 on our cam devices electronically versus sending you down randomly for tests. It's a lot cheaper. It's a lot cheaper than jail. And we can keep instantaneous and long-term track of your behavior, location. Alcohol consumption, obviously cannot do drugs at this point electronically. Community justice services as a whole, page four. If you see, we've done about 10,000 cases. We've almost cut custody time again in half. And in terms of the FTA rate, we've still managed to reduce that. So all our, against our baseline, which is kind of the pre-COVID time, we're showing improvements across the board, jail time, FTA rate, crimes while their cases are pending. So preliminarily, you've all made an excellent investment in, in the criminal justice system and reform by doing this. And I would see nothing but this trend continuing. And when I come back next time to brief, I think you are going to be amazed at the continued positive trends. Any questions from anyone?
Real quick question?
Just a quick comment. One, in your memo on the pre-services unit, they say they reduced failures to appear by 8%, but actually they got it down to 7% from 15. So that's really more of a 60% reduction.
Yes.
Not an 8% reduction.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's, it's a bigger than. But secondly, if you could get to us, though, some financials on, this is how much it's costing us to run these. And this, if we use, you know, the $125 a day jail thing, what that is. But I also just want to point out to people that it's not just the reduced unnecessary jail days, it's actually the reduction in case times. And all, all these different statistics are so critical and really leading the way for the entire community. So thanks for you and your team.
You're welcome. And if you talk about cost per case, every time you reduce the hearing load, the detention load, the FTA load, it all comes down. So again, very positive numbers, and I expect that trend to continue next time I brief.
Thank you, Howard. And our last item, we've got Eric Finch and Kim McCollum talking track. Take it away.
Good afternoon, counsel. Thanks for the time. So where the, the line item is for the, the operations piece, we're also prepared to answer questions on the, on the improvement side as well, which is on consent. I, I think I'm here to kind of facilitate the conversation. And, you know, we have, you know, both Jed from CHHS as well as Tanya from, from finance to help on the conversation and the questions as needed. So I, I think the, the basic summary for, for this is that the 3.9 million is simply to kind of authorize the budget move. It's not necessarily the amendment of the contract yet or any of those other things that would come. That's being worked on. We probably will not have that ready to drop on this Wednesday. Would probably be following that. But that's where it would be, you know, ultimately, the, the amendment to the contract for track based on at least the prior conversations we've had with the change of provider and the change of service level, the change of personnel counts. So all that's not necessarily this. This is simply the, the budget authority piece for that one funding source. So I'll pause there on the operations piece, just to see if there's any specific questions about the operations part.
Yes. Are we still paying 25% administrative fee?
Well, I, I, I think what is proposed, I think in, in, in the current budget pro formas that we've seen from, from the Salvation Army, is I believe it's, it came down to like the 22% piece. And the further analysis, I think that we did share with at least the budget committee is that about 4% or 5% is really, other providers potentially will bill those things as discrete costs, like for insurance or for some other things, where the Salvation Army basically rolls it into their admin and overhead. You know, so, you know, it's, it's very difficult to do and complete apples to apples. But it's still, I think to, I think everyone's point, a little bit higher than, than, than what you wanted it to be.
It's quite a bit higher.
Yes.
And my understand, but I have two, two things. They're sort of related, but, but not. So one, we have a contract that doesn't allow the billing of 25%. My question is, are we reimbursing under that contract? I know we're negotiating a new contract.
Right.
But are we reimbursing outside the contractual terms?
The current contract has just one budget category, which is operations of the shelters, which is inclusive of their administrative costs. And we are paying their administrative costs as they're billing them currently.
So we're paying at the 24%?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
But I thought there was some agreement with the original contract that the overhead was gonna be like, more like 6%. And I get that that was too low. So I'm, did we change that? Because we said that they were just gonna adopt the current, the old contract. And I thought we had specific, I think you've said several times you negotiated much lower than 24%.
Well, yes, and, and I, I think that it was, you know, I'd, I'd have to look, I get it, because I wasn't, I wasn't sure that that was gonna be, you know, the question for this.
Come back.
I, I believe it was in the 5% or so range. Which was, you know, I, I think a very individualized conversations with, with, with that provider. And, but they also had some other things they would bill separately, like the insurance or otherwise.
No, I understand that. But I'm just wondering, did the, did we change that language? Because we were under the impression when we approved the extension that we were gonna be doing it under the same terms as the Guardians contract.
Right, well, when, when we first briefed and first moved to kind of, on that immediate change last, you know, November 1, it was trying to, to inherit basically the contract as, as is or as was. There were certainly conversations then, as well as we've continued it through, through, through now. And, and this amendment process would be, you know, that's coming, would be the fulfillment of it, where we knew that they were gonna need to do things different, right? We knew that there's gonna be, you know, their, their estimates or when they did their RFP response was certainly different, you know, than, than what the, the, the other operator was. So, you know, I, I think that, that, yes, in, in, I, I think to, to your question, specifically, yes, they took over the contract as is. I think that, that what they wanted to make sure of is that there was the opportunity to come back and, and, and write that.
My, my worry is, though, we thought we were gonna have, be equal players at the negotiation table. And it sounds like they're just saying, no, we're gonna do the 24% regardless. That, that's the piece that, because we haven't had that final, like, what are we really agreeing to?
Well, yes, so, so again, they, they have, they have the model that they operate under, you know, in a, in, in many cities in, in the, in the country. And so they're, and they have obviously very different kind of structure to, to how they, they do their operations, which to a point has, has been, you know, successful. So I, I think, I, I do hear you and I do understand the dilemma. I would have to kind of go back and re- I would have to kind of go back and revisit that portion of it in terms of, you know, what they're billing and how to true that up based on your commentary, but I'm certainly not prepared with that today.
But Eric, I don't, there's no dilemma. I mean, we have a contract that specifically says what the amount is, and so what, so when was it decided, or I guess who approved, that we would authorize the 24%, 25% fee increase? I, it never came through us, there was never a vote that we said, yes, we consent to that. And so I'm wondering, how can we pay out-of-contract rates when we've never, we've never voted on doing that?
Yeah, and I don't have a good answer for that, council member. What I can say is that I think part of the challenge for this is, is that we're now in May, right? It's beginning of May, and I think we've not really been able to kind of solve, I think, the overall funding pathway that probably would have led us to be, you know, at that conversation point several months ago. So I think that it's not the answer you want, certainly, but I think that's part of the problem in terms of why we're at the position.
But what would stop them from, and they're not going to do this, but what would stop them from making it 45% and just saying, well, that's what we need? I mean, we've gone along with it so far. What would be different about that?
Well, I mean, you know, other than common sense and oversight, I mean, I do get your point, so I'm not trying to say it's perfect. What Jen was just kind of indicating on the past contract is that the indirect rate, like in the past or the original contract, was not set at a specific rate. It was all rolled up into the operations budget. So, you know, the, you know, the, so I think that's, that's part of the challenge in this, is that there isn't like one rubric on every contract item where it has, you know, necessarily that called out as a specific rate, at least for these contracts in the past.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for that. I'm looking at the contract right now, and it has a budget by category, and it says a total dollar amount for the category for 2023 for administration would be $107,000. And it says, "Any amendments to the budget must be requested in writing by the grantee and shall be submitted to the city's contract representative. If approved, the city will notify the grantee in writing. Budget amounts shall not be shifted between categories or programs without written approval by the city, and any cost for completing the project over and above the amount ordered by the city shall be the responsibility of the grantee." So how is what you're telling us matching the contract that we approved?
So if you go down to page 30, where it has attachment D budget, you can see that there's two categories in the budget. There's shelter operations for 2022 at $1,97,322, and then shelter operations for 2023 at So I'm not sure what page you were on where you had the hundred...
Yeah, that's attachment D.
Yeah. So there isn't a separate category for it.
Well, it says program, operations, facility, support, administration, HMIS.
My attachment D is...
No, am I?
I think you have the one from October.
Oh.
But regardless.
But the October one.
Okay.
Standby. Can I give you some feedback on your contract? You guys keep talking separately. One of the things, though, there's one thing of like, okay, admin for supervision and things like that, but there's others for pass-through, like this $90,000 a month for wastewater disposal. If, my understanding is they're just checking on 24% for that, and so it seems like that, those kinds of expenses need to be addressed in the next contract.
Yeah, no.
We've had several different, excuse me, several different conversations with the Salvation Army regarding this, and there, the things that, I think, to your point, we can go through, and we're meeting with them in this next week anyway, to kind of discuss some other things, but in regards to, they may include insurance where other agencies don't. I mean, there's some things nationally that they cover through that 24% that we may be able to pull out to at least identify, that that would have been in another section if they had not put it into admin. So that's something that, in regards to what your point in some of the emails that went through on Friday.
Well, we're going to have to have a conversation, I think, at some point, but we've got a hard stop in like three minutes, maybe four, so I just want to put that out there.
And I just want to answer that, Counsel President's, you know, so we specifically, you know, sat down, we looked at that, at those, and I would say that one of the things that's costing them the most staff time right now is, you know, trying to kind of police and clean up and keep those outside, you know, restrooms and shower units, you know, serviceable, and that's, and that's not necessarily a separate budget item, right? So sometimes it's not as clear.
Their staff time's reimbursable, plus the 24%.
Yes.
I'm just talking about the add-on.
Yeah, and we're right there with you on that.
Capital, that we...
So, yeah, just, I think the short piece on the capital, and I appreciate the time and the fact that we're under the gun here, but I think that, you know, I understand, you know, the nexus as it relates to, you know, the different budget fund sources. Just based on where we know we are in terms of, you know, the operational costs month to month, I certainly want to make sure that we can get that support, to get that movement continued as it relates to gain those improvements in place. And, you know, if they're still concerned in terms of, you know, where some of that fund source is, I would still advocate for doing everything we can to try to get that approval in place, even if we're trying to swap out some, you know, money on the backend piece of it to, you know, based on those further conversations. Because I'm cognizant about the fact that, you know, our plan last July or whatever, when we kind of started this process, was trying to get those restrooms in place by wintertime or by December, and obviously a number of things have happened, and we're still at the point where we've not been able to kind of, you know, quote unquote, pull the trigger and get those improvements in place.
Just a quick question. Help me remember this. Is the landlord, because we don't know the building, is the landlord pitching into those improvements as well?
Well, not for them specifically, but I think he's put in like another $500,000 for the other, like the fence, the fencing, the, he's going to repave the parking lot. There are some other expenses that I know he's been working with Mr. Perkins on in terms of reimbursing. They're part of the original plan, and I think what has been added to that is the parking lot, because the parking lot's kind of gotten torn up because of the trailers and some of the other things, improvements we've done there, and the parking lot, and so the landlord has taken that on board.
But if we leave the building, then he has improvements that we paid for, correct?
Yes, and I know it's controversial, but at least I know in my conversations with at least those in the trades, it's like there's, there's like a 50/50 chance that those improvements just get yanked out, depending on what that future use of that building would be.
But the parking lot fences, that's why he's paying for those, because those are going to help them regardless.
Well, yes.
Those don't get ripped out.
Yeah.
And I think we have to have a lot longer conversation. I still have dozens of questions.
And if, I can add one quick note, is that I hope to be able to connect with each one of you this week or the beginning of next week to go over all of the questions, because we knew we would not have as much time. We'll try to have some of those really detailed out, and I'd like to meet with all of you if that's a possibility.
Yeah.
We'll set up time.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, thanks, everybody, for staying till the bitter end.
All right.
We're adjourned.
Good job.